This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our April Board of Select meeting. I'm Michael Frida, North Haven's first selectman, joined as always by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Buwemi. Thank you for joining us this evening. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number two, are there any public comments to this evening's agenda? Okay. Item number three, the approval of the minutes of our March 7th Board of Select meeting.
I'll move the approval of those minutes.
Hold a second.
All right.
We have a motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to dispense with item number four tonight because I'd like to get to item number five. And April, as everyone knows, is National Child Abuse Month. And Mr. Raymond Fowler tonight has requested some time. And Raymond, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. I'm going to ask your indulgence to do this seated this evening. An hour ago, I was in the VA hospital. And I'm here now. Of all the times for me to get my illness to get worse, it would have to be the busiest week of the year for this child abuse program. But I hope you know by now that nothing would keep me away from being here and doing this presentation. So forgive me if I'm a little raspy and a little under the weather. But hopefully, we'll do well. When last I was given the privilege of talking about child abuse and its horrors, I was hoping, rather naively, it might be the last time I would have to speak to you about child abuse. Well, I guess I was very naive. Where I had hoped that I could report to you this year that the instances of child abuse have gone down. I'm sorry, I can't report that because, in effect, the instances of child abuse nationwide have gone up 17 percent and 22 percent Connecticut-wise. Now, why you would hope, certainly why you would think that the instances would go down because the economy is better, it didn't work out this way this year. The instances get worse and worse. And they get worse. And will continue to get worse simply because we are having a situation where, as things always seem to happen, child abuse is a power issue. As long as there are adults, from parents, siblings, teachers, coaches, corps de gérant, doesn't matter. As long as there is a person in a perceived position of power and authority, we are going to see the instances tragically of child abuse increasing. And that is a very bad thing. However, it is. So what we need to do now is to recommit ourselves. We have to work harder than we ever did before to make child abuse a priority. Not only a community priority, not only a government priority, but a priority within ourselves. We have to monitor child abuse. We have to report it when we see it. We have to do things to end it wherever we can. It's our duty. It's our responsibility. Because until we can say to ourselves and in all ways that we're going to work to eliminate child abuse, which we probably never can because, like I just said, as long as it's a power issue and there are all too many people who view this strictly as a power issue. If you ask me, and I've been working at this problem for 51 years, if you ask me, what happens is it just gets out of control. People who can't be a... can't separate themselves from abusing children by abusing their power, it only gets worse. It only gets worse. Now, about... About seven years ago, I guess it was... About seven years ago, I wrote a piece. I wrote every word of it, I swear. I can't tell you that I'm going to be able to get through this. But we have to think about it. I called this piece, but you didn't care. I needed you to protect me from childhood horrors, but you didn't care. I needed you. I needed you to feed me. But you didn't care. I needed you to clothe me. But you didn't care. I needed you to keep me warm. But you didn't care. And I needed you to share my homework, my homework at Little League. But you didn't care. I needed you to help me with my homework. But you didn't care. I needed you to applaud my good grades. But you didn't care. I needed you to tell me it was all right to fail. But you didn't care. I needed you to reassure me. But you didn't care. I needed you to tell me everything. Everything would be all right. But you didn't care. I needed you to get me a birthday cake with candles. But you didn't care. I needed you to comfort me. But you didn't care. I needed you to protect me from Bowie's. But you didn't care. I needed you to get me Christmas happiness. But you didn't care. I needed you to hug me, to keep me safe. But you didn't care. By the way, I should mention while we flip pages here, in my 51 years of work with child abuse, I probably interviewed over 300 children. That's how this came about. This is what children told me. I needed you to give me a dollar on Pizza Friday so I could enjoy it with the rest of my friends. But you didn't care. I needed you to stop hitting me. But you didn't care. I needed you to stop doing drugs and alcohol and to love me. But you didn't care. I needed you to understand. I needed you. I needed you to understand that I'm just a kid. And sometimes I do bad things. I do bad things. Because I'm just a kid. But you didn't care. I needed you to help me understand life. But you didn't care.
I needed you to comfort me when I was sad. But you didn't care. I needed you to take me to church. But you didn't care. I needed you to spend a day with me, just me. But you didn't care. I needed you to stop hitting me because it really hurts. But you didn't care. I needed you to keep a promise, just once. But you didn't care. I needed you to tell me that the monsters under my bed or in my closet while I lay there in the dark weren't real. But you didn't care. I needed you to tell me how worthwhile I am instead of how worthless I am. But you didn't care. I needed you to just love, cherish, and care about me for what a magnificent child I am. But you didn't care enough to do any of that. And you broke my heart.
And this is the one that always kind of really got me. And you broke my heart 1,000 times. And 1,000 times, you didn't care. And I swear before Almighty God that if in a way I have children of my own, I will care. So help me, God. I hope, ladies and gentlemen, that you will forgive me my emotionalism. You see, in January of 1968, I was diagnosed with a rare and fatal disease. And they gave me at that time some two years, maybe if I was lucky, to live. As you can see, things are a little tough right now. I left the VA hospital today, an hour ago, to come here. This is my busiest week of the year in this moment. And I'm going to keep at it. You can bet. And if I have to crawl to get this work done, I'm going to continue to do this work. Children need help. And they need a lot more than my help. They need a lot more than Sally's help. They need your help. Because things just get worse and worse and worse. I can't believe the things that people do to their children. I subscribe to a service and I get a report usually every day, sometimes two or three times a day, of the terrible things people are doing to their children. I say, let's stop it. Again, I'm sorry that I lost control. I apologize. But ever since that day in 1968, when I made this my life's cause, I'm going to keep doing it. I don't know how much longer I'm going to be able to do it. But you can bet I'm going to do it. And I'm just not going to stop. Now, we have some bags here. When we got the bags put together, my friend Mike Frida suggested that I wanted to get a bag because I'm so ugly I could put it over my head, you know? And I might do better in the moment if I just covered up my ugly face. I think it's shot at. Also, we have some mugs that say "No excuse for child abuse." So then every morning when you take your first swig of, as we used to call it in a Marine car, wafers juice, when you have a swig of coffee, the first thing you'll remember is you have to... And you have to stop it. It's going to work. It'll work every day. Again, I apologize for showing this side. But I don't know what else to do. I love children. I have three granddaughters. And two children. And all I can do is just keep working. Now I'm asking you to keep working too. I am going to die probably pretty soon. But here's the good news. The work doesn't end with me. I'm so delighted to tell you that my lovely and beautiful wife of 49 years will continue this effort after I'm gone. And if you think that I have a love for this work, if you think I did a good job, wait till you see what she does. Wait till you see what she does. She'll do it a lot better than I did. Think of children. Care for children. Make children... Children feel loved. They have to feel loved. And by the way, I'm sure Sally will be calling on help. We have a member of our farmer committee here this year. I hope we're going to convince her to fight with us again and maybe anybody else who wants to join the fight. Let us know. We can use all the help we can get. If you didn't get a bag and a mug, please come get one. A deputy chief in the police department is here. The police department has been an excellent staunch supporter of this program. Chief Gunn, thank you very much for everything the North Haven Police Department has done and I know will continue to do. To the board of selectmen, thank you for... Thank you for your support. And believe me. Believe me. I'll be with you. I'll be there doing whatever I can until the day I die. And then you got a lot better help than me coming up. I deeply appreciate your time. I deeply appreciate your listening. And I really regret my emotional outbursts. But know this. I love all children. Join me. Help me. Let's save all children everywhere from the horrors of child abuse. Thank you all very much.
Raymond, thank you very much. And I'm going to give you a call tomorrow to catch up a little bit more personally, okay? I'll call you tomorrow.
I have to call the hospital. I came to the hospital. My doctor, who I love dearly, she's a great woman, she said, "You don't come back right after this meeting is over. She's going to kick..." And I think she could do it, you know? At least now she could. But how about if I call you? That would be better.
All right, let's leave it that way, okay?
Okay, you got it.
Thanks, Raymond.
Mr. Fowler, I have a slightly different perspective that I'd like to share with you. One of the first things you said in your presentation to us tonight was you reluctantly pointed out a statistic that the number of child abuse reporting has increased. And so I want to remind you that your effort is called Child Abuse Awareness Month. And so maybe because of your efforts, there, all these decades, there's greater awareness and the reporting is what's increased. And therefore, more children are actually getting help. So I think that that is something that you can look on proudly, that because of increased awareness, more children, more people are reporting it, more children are getting the help that they need because you cared. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bill, anything?
I wanted to thank you, Dr. Ray, because, you know, just as Sally said, you do care. I mean, you care about... I mean, I think your service to our country, you know, what you've done for child abuse, what you've done for all of us. And I think you've shown, you know, that once a Marine, you're always a Marine. You know? And I love you for that. Just like you love all those kids. It's very poignant when you, you know, you could see the... When you were reading your poem, I could tell you could see the faces of the children, you know, that told you the times that people didn't care. And that's... So, you know... And that actually was something very significant to share with us, that this was something that came from the children that you talked to. So, you know... But clearly, you do care and always have. And I appreciate that. We all appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Raymond. And Sally, thank you very much also.
If you'll forgive me, I got to get back. You're for sure.
Poorly, they call you AWOLs, huh? For not being...
Let's go to pause here, ladies and gentlemen, while Ray gets ready to go back.
They gave me a new car. I thought I was going to get a Corvette. They gave me this.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you again, Raymond and Sally. Now we'll move to item number six on the agenda. Sally, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. I know we're all... We were all very moved by Colonel Fowler's comments. But the business of town government must go on. And I asked... I want to thank you for putting this item on the agenda. I wanted the opportunity to make a brief statement regarding the budget public hearing of two nights ago. And I thought this was the best meeting to do so because it was just two days ago. And I briefly wanted to address the public hearing specifically because of a situation that occurred as I approached the microphone to speak when the firemen at the hearing walked out. But first, I wanted to talk about the February 26th Fire Commission meeting, which I attended. Because at that meeting during public comment, I had a very pleasant conversation with Chairman Nuzalillo. And he knows that I've supported all the fire apparatus purchases during my tenure on the Board of Selectmen and that last year I had initially advocated to hire four new firefighters as a compromise to the chief's request for eight. And at that Fire Commission meeting in February, the chairman acknowledged his respect for my efforts and opinions. And he said, speaking to me, quote, "We're appreciative of the dialogue," unquote. He also said, again, speaking directly to me, quote, "Residents are better informed because of the research you've done." And that's at minute 36 of the February 26th Fire Commission meeting, excuse me, minute 36. If anyone wants to verify those quotes, that I'm not taking them out of context. So in light of those supportive and cooperative comments by the Fire Commission chairman, So in light of those supportive and cooperative comments by the Fire Commission Chairman, I believe that when the firemen walked out en masse at the public hearing, just as I was walking to the microphone to complete my statement, I believe it reflected badly on the Fire Department rank and file as well as the Fire Department leadership. I thought that this childish, childish act of rebellion was entirely consistent with the verbal attacks and insults perpetrated against me at the February Board of Selectmen meeting by the Fire Union President. And, you know, I made some accusations at the public hearing that I felt because other male members of our town government had similar opinions as I did, but that I was the only one that seemed to be targeted. I made an accusation of sexism in this town government. And ladies and gentlemen, that was an accusation that I made with a very heavy heart and very reluctantly. And certainly, the first time in my life I've ever made such a statement like that. But in light of how recent events took place during the budgetary process, I really felt I had no choice. And I believe that the actions of the firemen when they walked out, as I approached the microphone, proved my point. And I believe that if the Fire Department wants to be treated like experts and like the professionals that they claim to be, that they have to act like professionals. And storming out of the auditorium as I, an elected official, was walking to the microphone was an act of intolerance and hostility that disrespected the very nature of the public hearing process. And quite frankly, I thought it was disrespectful to all of the citizens of North Haven that I have the privilege to represent. I thought this walkout was a disgrace to the ideals of civil discourse and respect for opposing opinions as articulated by the Fire Commission Chairman back in February. And I will be interested to hear how the Fire Commission Chairman reconciles his positive discussions with me at that meeting with the actions of the Fire Department on April 2nd. Thank you for allowing me the time to make that statement.
You're welcome. Okay, we'll move to...
So the only, the only thing I would say is that, you know, that I would take maybe an exception with is to say that, you know, because I think it, I think it's a generalization to say that sexism exists in town government. I mean, I, you know, those are, those are actions by individuals. They may be firefighters. They may work for the town. I also don't know whether they, again, I was sitting there, I, you were looking at them, so I wasn't. My back was to them. I didn't even necessarily knew that they left.
Well, I announced that they were walking out as I looked. I said, "Look, everyone, they're leaving."
I mean, you, you've, you've been very, you know, you've been very detailed, like in your explanation. So I'm not sure that maybe even, I'm not sure all of them did that just to be, you know, and I don't, I don't believe that, you know, that anybody should be rude or, you know, or confrontational just for the sake of doing that. I'm not sure that they all did that necessarily.
All but two.
I mean, I mean, to leave.
Mr. Andrew isn't Mr. Obier, stayed.
Yeah, I think maybe they, you know, they knew what, they already knew what your position was. I think, you know, you've expressed it in other forms. I think other people left too. I mean, and I don't think they intended to be rude.
Well, I had a lot of different things to say. This is America, you know? Everyone is free to do, as they say. My point is, you know, based on other things that had happened to me, as opposed to some other elected officials in town with similar, if not exact, positions of mine, that despair is, disparate treatment led me to that very difficult conclusion and, you know, that's why I just wanted to make this statement. So...
And I hope it's not.
What did you think of them walking out?
Um, yeah, it, you know, the nights, you know, sometimes these things go on a long time, you know? And, you know, I think that's why we limit it to 10 minutes, you know? And some people, yeah, I think people watching on TV sometimes, you know, I mean, like our meetings or the Board of Finance meetings that we all go to, you know? You end up saying, you know, I basically, you know, got a good understanding of everybody's position and they end up, end up turning this off.
So the very moment that I got up to start walking to the microphone was the very moment they got too tired to be there. That, that's, that could be.
But, well, it may not be true for some of them, but maybe not true for all of them.
Well, they all walked en masse. But that, that's why, I just wanted to make that statement. I'm entitled to make it and I made it. And I very much appreciate, Mr. Frieda, you allowing me to, to make it. I did want to say...
If anybody's, and if anybody's been rude to you, I mean, in the course of that...
Well, you sat here and watched someone be quite rude to me.
Yeah, and I'm sorry for...
I questioned the if part, but, okay.
I'm sorry if they have been rude. I mean, that's...
Yeah, well, thank you.
You know, I mean, there's no place for...
That's my first apology.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, it's probably within their First Amendment rights.
Absolutely. Well, you just certainly say, "This is America." Yes.
It's not something that, you know, that us as, us as, as individuals, you know, liker really would want to happen, you know? Because I don't think that, I think, I don't think anything that you do intends to be rude.
Thank you.
I think you're, I think you've tried to, to take, you know, I, you know, we may not agree on everything, but I think you've tried to take a reasoned position in terms of the things that you've done, you know? And there are things we agree with and there, that we agree on, there are things maybe we don't agree on.
Right.
But there's no reason to, for, for people to dismiss your positions rudely because I don't think that you're, I think you're being honest in taking those positions.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And that's why I made the statement. And again, Mr. Hellyan, Mr. Monaco, Mr. Leanos, and to some degree, Mr. Dahani agreed with many of my positions throughout the budgetary process. I did want to say one more thing about the public hearing that just came to my attention a couple of hours ago. I, I got a bunch of emails, because, you know, obviously, I didn't watch the live broadcast because I was there. But I did get some emails from not only supporters of mine, but people that I have had, you know, interesting email conversations with over the years. And they said, "Sally," and you might know about this, Val, "a couple of minutes after you started your first 10-minute presentation, the bulk of it, about eight of the 10 minutes, the TV was black and there was no sound." And people were emailing me, "Oh, they, they pulled the plug on you. How could you tolerate this?" You know? I said, "Whoa, whoa, 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 no." And I, I, from my understanding, it was Yuval who contacted Walt, Walt Mann, who runs NHTV.
Because I had a family member at home that was watching.
Yes.
He texted me to tell me that the TV just went black.
And, right. So I, rather than email all those people back, I just want to say that, you know, no one pulled the plug on me. There, there was a technical difficulty and, you know, with my luck, as it's been going lately, it, that technical difficulty occurred just a minute or two into my presentation. And by the time it was remedied, the next person was, was already at the microphone. So most of my statement was not broadcast that night.
So was the audio, was the audio out too, or no?
No, everything.
That was the live version.
Oh, the live version, oh.
Recorded version.
This is what, yes, that's what I confirmed. And so, you know, for those of you out there that were concerned about how this could happen to me, don't be concerned. It was a technical difficulty. And as Val just mentioned, I was assured that, that it was recorded in full. So when it is rebroadcast, as it will be many times in the next few weeks, so I encourage people to, to watch it in its entirety, you know, my full statement will be there because it was recorded. It just, I just got shut off for eight out of my 10 minutes. So that saves me from doing a bunch of emails.
So that may explain why we had the technical difficulties in the beginning. That's why the meeting was delayed to start.
No, no, that was a different issue. The, the thing that happened, there's a, a connection in the back of the stage that was kind of mangled. So the cable that went into it was unable to lock in place and it was just kind of sitting there. And of course, right at the time when I was speaking, it just fell out.
Right. So the rebroadcast is in its entirety?
Yeah, the, the, I was, the entire meeting was recorded, but the live broadcast, this cable connection fell out of this mangled plug-in thing, you know? I'm not an electrician. Walt did his best to explain it to me. And it just happened to disengage right about a minute into my presentation. So what are you gonna do? You know, there's no indication that somebody was back there, you know, banging on the wall to force it out because, because Sally Bwamey was at the microphone. No.
We owe a bit of gratitude to Ralph, who, she was the one who discovered it.
Right. And, well, and you as well. Otherwise, it would have been black for, a black screen with no voice for a lot longer. So bravo to Val Gutkin once again.
Thanks, Val.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so let's move to item number seven. I'm gonna have Bill and Sally read these resolutions and whereas, okay?
I'll go.
Go for Sally.
Number seven, Fair Housing Resolution, Town of North Haven. Whereas, all persons are afforded a right to full and equal housing opportunities in the neighborhood of their choice. And federal fair housing laws require that all individuals, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, family status, or natural, national, excuse me, national origin, be given equal access to all housing-related opportunities, including rental and home ownership opportunities, and be allowed to make free choices regarding housing location. And Connecticut fair housing laws require that all individuals, regardless of race, creed, color, national origin, ancestry, sex, marital status, age, lawful source of income, or, or, loss of source, sorry, lawful source of income, family status, learning disability, physical or mental disability, sexual orientation, be given equal access to all housing-related opportunities, including rental and home ownership opportunities, and be allowed to make free choices regarding housing location. The Town of North, and the Town of North Haven is committed to upholding these laws and realizing that these laws must be supplemented by an affirmative statement publicly endorsing the right of all people to full and equal housing opportunities in the neighborhood of their choice.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of North Haven hereby endorses a fair housing policy to ensure equal opportunity for all persons to rent, purchase, obtain financing, and enjoy all other housing-related services of their choice on a nondiscriminatory basis as provided by state and federal law. And be it further resolved that the chief executive officer of the Town of North Haven or his designated representative is responsible for responding to and assisting any person who alleges to be the victim of an illegal discriminatory housing practice in the Town of North Haven and for advising such person of the right to file a complaint, the State of Commission, I'm sorry, the State of Connecticut Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities.
Okay.
CHRO or the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, or to seek assistance from the Connecticut Fair Housing Center, legal services, or other fair housing organizations to protect his or her right to equal housing opportunities.
All right, so ladies and gentlemen, watching, this is something we do every year. It memorializes for the Town of North Haven, our compliance with the federal and state issues. We're happy to do it every year. So I'd like to have a motion to accept the resolution.
I'll move the resolution as read.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, Sally?
Yes, number eight. Call for the annual budget town meeting to be held on Monday, May 13th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the auditorium of the North Haven High School, 221 Elm Street, North Haven, Connecticut, to conduct the following business. One, to consider and act upon the recommendation of the Board of Finance to take action regarding the budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020. Bill, do you want to continue, please?
See, two, number two, to establish the due date and number of installments for the payment of property taxes, real estate, personal property, motor vehicle, and supplemental motor vehicle in accordance with sections 12-142 and 12-144A of the Connecticut General Statutes. Excuse me. And number three, pursuant to section 77 of the Connecticut General Statutes, to adjourn said town meeting at its conclusion and to submit the question concerning the adoption of a budget for fiscal year July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020, to a vote by paper ballot on Tuesday, May 21, 2019, including the establishment of the exact hours of voting at referendum pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, section 7-9B, that voting will take place between the hours of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM at the following North Haven polling place. All districts, Mildred, Wakely, Rex Center, 7 Lindsay Street.
And the aforementioned recommendations will be placed on paper ballots as the following question, quote, "Shall the Town of North Haven, in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Finance, approve and adopt a budget consisting of $54,590, $54 million?" Oh, yeah, right. Fifty, it's been a long week, ladies and gentlemen. $54,590,313 for the Board of Education and $49,195,637 for the town government, for a total amount of $103,785,950 for the fiscal year July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020, unquote. Voters approving said question will vote yes, and those opposing said question will vote no.
Okay, so this is the point in this agenda where we need to call for the next meeting. So I'd like to ask for a motion to call for the next town meeting with the criteria that was stated here for Monday, May 13th at 7:00 PM.
I'll make the motion for the call as read.
I'll second that motion.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Yes. Of course, I'll be in favor of the motion, but I just want to remind everybody, your town calendars have different dates for these two things. The town calendar, I think it's appropriate to remind them again.
Yes.
Thank you. You know, if, if you're like me, you've got the town calendar hanging somewhere in your kitchen and it says the 6th, but that was a mistake. It has to be the second Monday of, of the month of May per our charter. So again, I want to emphasize that the budget town meeting is not the date on your calendars. In fact, it is Monday, May 13th. And again, the, the date for the referendum is not Tuesday, the 14th, which is what it says on your calendars. The referendum is Monday, May 21st. I know we just read that.
No, Tuesday.
Tuesday, oh, excuse me.
Give you the calendar.
Look at that.
Just so we can get the dates right. It's Tuesday, the 21st.
Yes, it, it, but on the original calendar, it was the 14th.
You can see where you crossed it.
So everything's been changed a week. The referendum is Tuesday, May 21st, 2019. Thank you, Bill, for that.
No, that's okay.
I just felt that it was important at the time of the call to stress that again, even though we read it, you know, were you guys listening when we were reading it? I don't know. It's very important that, that everyone understand that your calendars at home are incorrect. And so hopefully, we'll be putting something in the paper to highlight the change as well.
Well, because it's a week later instead of a week earlier, so if you showed up on the 14th, you wouldn't be able to vote anyhow, so.
Right. I'm just trying to...
But as Sally said, it's the 21st.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want people to show up on the wrong day. They might get discouraged and say, "Well, I'm not coming back." Yeah. So I want them to have the right day. The budget town meeting, Monday, May 13th. The referendum, Tuesday, May 21st. So ignore your calendars, go by those dates. And please vote.
All right, so we've had a motion in a second. We've had discussion.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All right, so hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So now, William, number nine, if you would.
Next item on the agenda is the appointment of William C. Colhep, 9 Eleanor Road, to the Quinnipiac Valley Health District Board of Directors for a three-year term to expire May 31st, 2022. Well, I served with Bill on the Board of Finance and I think he's, you know, I think he did a great job on the Board of Finance. I know he's, you know, he's a medical professional. I think this is a great appointment, so I'll make a motion to appoint Bill to the Quinnipiac Valley Health District Board of Directors.
I agree with you, Bill. I'll second.
I'd just like to say, I'm so happy to see this. Bill, Bill Colhep, he's an outstanding individual. He's a dean at Quinnipiac University. I've known him for years. As Bill said, he served with us on the Board of Finance. Just a wonderful, professional individual whom we have a great deal of respect for. So I'm really happy to see this, Val. Okay, so we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Sally?
Number 10, I'll move the, for the approval of the property tax refunds listed in our agenda.
Nothing unusual, and I'll second that motion.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the next meeting of our Board of Selectmen... Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the next meeting of our Board of Selectmen is Thursday, May 2nd. I'd like to ask Bill and Sally something. I may have a conflict that night, and Val, how soon do we need to know whether I can't get out of the conflict? I think the first thing is to see if Bill and Sally would be available on the 9th, the following Thursday?
Thursday, the 9th.
Right. So could you both look at that tomorrow?
I can, oh, I was fortunate, I should bring my calendar with me, since I'm using the town calendar for some of my other stuff, and I'm okay for, I can confirm right now I'm okay for the 9th.
Myself as well, yes.
All right, so would you be willing to consider maybe pushing the meeting another week back?
That's fine.
Thank you. I have a personal conflict. A friend of mine that passed away a couple of years ago, we do this memorial dinner for him, we're all part of the Notre Dame High School West Haven alumni, and he was a dear friend of mine, so they're having, we're having our second annual memorial dinner, and we give scholarships at our high school as the proceeds for this dinner, back to our high school at Notre Dame, so I thank you for that.
Well, of course, we'll do it. Plus, it'll be closer to the budget town hearing.
Yeah.
Budget town meeting, so we could remind people again to attend not only the meeting, but to vote, and so have fun at your event.
Thank you. Thank you for that. So, Val, we'll have to make sure that, even though we're announcing it tonight, the meeting will be May 9. Maybe we just get the word out there, too, okay? So.
Right. Val, I'll just...
Okay. All right. We're not beyond the deadline of doing that, are we?
No.
Okay, we're good. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, item number 12, public comment. Okay, seeing none, we'll...
No.
No, Sherman, okay.
They're just being polite.
Hello. Nancy Barrett, Cresview Drive. I would just like to say just very briefly, on February 25, there was a special town meeting, and about 50 people voted to appropriate $750,000 to purchase a new fire engine. And then there was another special town meeting on March 25, and only seven people voted on two separate resolutions. So I was, I attended both of those meetings, and I was just very disappointed and frustrated with the fact that only seven people voted and ultimately decided, in a four-to-three vote, a significant change in the town policy regarding the threshold increase for the public bidding process. Five of the seven people who voted were either elected officials or town employees, and the only two regular folks there were Mr. Katz and myself. So I would just like to encourage my fellow citizens to please participate in your local government. With a four-to-three vote, it is very clear that every vote counts, and so I would encourage everyone, please participate in both the budget town meeting on May 13, as well as the referendum on May 21. Thank you so much.
We actually, Nancy, happen to agree with you very much on this. We've been trying to do this for years and try to increase the turnout. So it's something that we try, we publicize the meetings, so this is the form of government that we have. You know, I saw a letter, there was a letter in the editor, or to the editor today about suggesting that we change the form of government. I gotta be honest with you, you know, from what I know about the history of North Haven, that was attempted back in 1981. People liked this form of government.
Right.
But I think to your point, I do agree with you on this, we have to really encourage people to come out, because that's why we have the town meeting form of government, Bill, so.
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Barrett, because, you know, we all watch the news, and we're so frustrated about what happens at Hartford and Washington, and we feel helpless with the frustrations in our world, but here in our, in our community, where our daily lives are affected, you know, we could really make a difference, as Ms. Barrett just said, and as you agree.
I totally agree.
So I encourage people to pay attention, and this is one form of government where you could make a difference, so.
Now, let me just, because this, I think it's a very important topic.
It is very important.
If you look at this form of government versus other forms of government, so in other forms of government, the public doesn't have the input that we offer in the town meetings. The council, in a council form of government, it's the council that makes the decisions. So the public, in some respects, is carved out of the decision-making process.
Right.
So we really need to help perpetuate this form of government in terms of its participation, so I think it's a valid point you make.
Yeah, we're relinquishing our voice in our own town government, and it's a beautiful opportunity to both speak up as well as speak your mind with your votes.
I totally agree.
So I encourage everyone to do the same.
Okay, thanks so much.
I'll put...
And I think one of the things, too, is that sometimes I think works against us is that having it televised is both the best thing and the worst thing, because, you know, you could sit in the comfort of your home and, you know, watch, you know, watch us, you know, watch our meetings and everything and not come, but I think you have to, I think to the point that Nancy, that you made and everybody else made, is that I think you have to distinguish between a meeting where, you know, instead of watching it on TV, you should be here in person so you can vote, you know, versus just watching it on TV when it's just a board meeting like this, or, you know, a town, a meeting, a budget presentation where, you know, you don't have to get up and leave, or you could watch it at a later date, so. I think the vote, the vote aspect is important, and for people to distinguish between the, I think you, you, you know, very odd, you know, very odd meeting where there were so few people in attendance.
I'd like to just stay on this topic for, I have one more comment on this, because I think Val's heard me say this in the past there. In my corporate business career, we had board directors, a CEO, I had to deal with the board of directors, and we had the shareholders. This form of government allows someone like me in this position to do something that I like. I always preferred to meet with the shareholders of my corporation, not so much have everything done through the board of directors. A council form of government is a board of directors form of government, if you want to draw an analogy to a corporation. This form of government allows the CEO to deal directly with the shareholders, and I think that's a real advantage in this form of government, because the people have a voice. So I think it's a good topic. Thank you, Nancy, and we'll continue.
It's a good analogy, yeah.
So.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Katz, yes?
I wasn't going to talk about this, but 50 years ago, when I moved into North Haven, when we went to town meetings, they were standing remotely, and it poured out into the halls. We would have 300, 400 people at a town meeting. You're lucky you get 10. I don't know what the answer to that is. I want to start out by saying I'm an unaffiliated voter. I'm not a member of either party. Sally, I'm sorry that what happened to you happened. I think, you know, maybe the lambs follow the shepherd. What can I tell you? I can't believe all those guys dislike you. The, about eight or 10 years ago, Mike came to me and he said, "What do you think if I run for first electman?" And I said to him, "Mike, I like you, I like the way you think, and I'll support you 100%. But there's going to be times when you do things I don't agree with, and I'm going to have to tell you this."
You always said that, I know.
And I, sometimes I do it publicly, and sometimes I do it privately, because I don't care to embarrass people. This is one of those times that I don't totally agree with you. In my 50 years of residency in North Haven, you are the best first electman we've had. No one has come up to your level of leadership and progress, but sometimes I think you fall by the wayside.
You knew there was going to be a fall.
Oh, I knew it was coming, I knew it, yes.
You knew this had, this shoe had a fall. We had high surpluses for several years, and about three years ago, we had a surplus that you used a good portion of for paying down or enforcing a pension program.
Yes.
And at that point, I asked you, "Why would you use a surplus, which some people may say is overtaxation, where you took more money from my pocket than you should have, and you use it for something that I did not intend it for?" And we discussed it, and you said, and I don't, I don't have the exact words, but I think you said to me, "Well, I promise I'll never do that again." Well, I think you did it again, Mike.
No, we didn't. We just funded our...
You're taking, you're taking the surplus that we have now, and you're going to use that to pay down debt. And that's not with the surplus, where the surplus came from. The reason that we bond is to keep our mill rate low, so that we don't have big bills to pay in any one year. And these are words that you've said, but now you want to pay off some of those bonds and not take the surplus and return it to the people it came from. You could have, I believe you could have taken that surplus, or a good portion of it, and maybe reduce our mill rate by anywhere from 1 to 3 mills. Now, it doesn't sound like much, 1 to 3 mills, but you're talking about a no-mill increase.
Right.
That's, that's even less than 1 to 3 back to me. I mean, I can't, I can't fathom why you wouldn't return it back to the people.
Because we're giving it back to the people, you know, we've had this discussion many times. When we roll over surpluses to the next year, we're giving it back to the people to maintain or to pay expenses in that fiscal year budget. So by giving that surplus back to the people, I'm just generalizing now, that's why there's no taxing.
But you're using that surplus to pay down debt.
Which is, I think, a sound strategy.
Well, no, if you didn't pay, if you, if you use the debt for the way you intended it, we bond to buy this item or those items, and we're going to pay for it over 15 or 18 years, and you're doing that to keep our mill rate down, well, stay with your program. Give us a return on, give us our mills back, give us our money back.
But then the debt line would go up, Sherman, then the mill rate would have to increase, and so...
But you've, you've, you've made allowances for that debt anyhow. You've said, "I'm going to build this debt over 16 years."
Maybe I am a victim of my own corporate career.
It could be.
Because we always tried to keep debt low. We didn't ever want it to be highly leveraged as a corporation.
But we're not, as you've, as you've said many times, we're not highly leveraged at all. We're at a very good financial position, and that's why we have a, one of the reasons for AAA rating. So you're saying, you're saying we, we want to keep our debt low, but we want to borrow money to do things, and then we're going to pay it off of this year's surplus.
Well, you know, we disagree on this issue, Sherman. I mean, we've, and I don't want to open up this again, because we've talked about this so many times.
I understand that, and Mike, I know you could talk circles around me.
No, no, I can't.
You could.
No. No, but let me say this, well, you finish, Sherman, then I want to share something with you, okay? Because we go back, as you know, and the audience may know, you were the, probably the first one that I became friends with when I first started in this career.
And we're still friends.
We are. So we go back a long way, but I want to share something with you personally after you finish, okay?
And I want to continue friendship, but there's certain things I don't agree with you.
I know, I understand, yeah.
Now, last year's budget had a very small increase of about 2.5% to 3%. This year, I think it's up around 6%. And you've said in the...
4.8.
4.8, okay, I'm sorry. Is that because of the debt service?
No, the, you know, the incremental expenditures to support largely public safety. We roll the four SROs over, and the police department, we have the firefighters, it's a full year next year, we're adding two firefighters starting in January, and I'm upgrading the 911 emergency dispatch system with four dispatchers starting in January, so I can make an argument that a large portion of the increase is to enhance public safety.
Well, that comes out of the good, Mike.
I know, okay, so, but anyway, go ahead, Sherman.
Okay. You've always said you'd like, you want the budget increase to be less than 3%. This is pretty, pretty much from day one that you gave it to office.
4.9.
4.9.
You have 4, $1,800,000.
All right, I want to say that I definitely know, I am not an expert in fire, I'm not talking about micromanaging fire, but many residents, including the chief and Mary White, have said that we have increased in medical calls, and that's where we have a big problem there. But the funds that you've set up are not there to solve the problem of the increased medical calls. They're there for some other reason. We were hiring a total of, what, eight firemen over the next six years?
We evaluated every budget, budget by budget. That would be the end goal, yes.
And that, my figures could be incorrect, and we go over it one of these days, but that's a $1.4 million increase to the budget, because two this year, next year it's two plus two, the next year's the four plus two, and the next year's another, it's six plus two. All that adds up over three years to approximately 100, $1.4 million. It's going to be a lot for you to overcome in a budget. That's not to talk about the equipment that goes along with it, the fire trucks and the equipment. I'm not saying it's the wrong thing to do, I think that we're not really looking at it that carefully. Okay, and what am I, this... I did hear Sally discuss the, what her budget, suggested budget cuts would be. I hate to use the word cuts, changes. Your, your suggestion to change certain things and reduce some of the purchases, I thought was very good. That was at the Board of, I think the Board of Finance.
The Board of Finance. I actually modified one of those statements. I presented the Board of Finance with about $817,000 in cuts, and I modified one of those, which, which was the $300,000 used ladder truck, not fired, ladder truck, after I clarified with the chief in the past week that that ladder truck would in fact replace the 2001 Pierce ladder truck that's currently at Northeast, that I believe needs to be replaced. I, you know, he had a slide during his presentation that said that the $300,000 used ladder truck was going to replace Engine 5, which is already out of service. So I'm like, "Oh, we're going to have three ladder trucks, we don't need three." So I, but when he, when he clarified that it would still be down to two ladder trucks, I modified my position, and this is what might have been cut from the eight minutes that was, you know, the black screen for eight minutes, was that I then suggested to the Board of Finance that they do what we did last year with some considerable capital items and the capital, capital items in the Public Works, which was to take the $300,000 out of the capital budget and use MERSA so that it would stay out of the mill rate calculation. This current fiscal year, we've used $916,000 of MERSA money to purchase about $730,000 worth of Public Works equipment, three dump truck plows, and two recycling vehicles. So that process of doing that kept that $700,000 expense of that equipment out of the mill rate calculation, otherwise the slight mill rate increase that you referenced would have been much more. So I was suggesting, now that I understood clearly the chief's goal with the used ladder truck, okay, we do need it, it's only going to be two, we need it, 2001 Pierce is on its last legs, but let's take it out of the budget. So I'll be asking the Board of Finance at their next meeting what they thought of my idea about it being paid at MERSA, but then I did have other cuts.
It's been brought to our attention that we bought a brand-new fire truck.
Yeah.
That was not what they wanted, not what they designed.
Yeah, the demo in 2014?
Yeah, and...
It's been nothing but trouble.
It did nothing but trouble. Now we're going to buy a used truck for $300,000, and hopefully that's not going to be nothing but trouble.
I mentioned that, I said, "I hope we get a good used one, kick the tires, I don't know." Thank you, Mr. Clark.
And I think the only other thing I'm going to say is, if there are any firemen listening, or EMTs, or, oh, yes, I see the ladder truck going to the medical calls constantly, and...
Don't even go there.
...the lumber trucks constantly. Okay, the only other thing is, to the, to the, the medical service in town, please don't take offense. The next time I call 911, please don't have a flat tire, don't go the wrong way, please be on time as you usually are. Thank you.
So Sherman, you don't want to...
You read your comment.
You don't want to hear my personal story?
Yeah, well, you're definitely, I have to lean against the wall, though. I just had a birthday.
Yeah, I know, I saw it on Facebook, you saw, I wish you happy birthday. By the way, that was a picture probably about 20 or 25 years ago. You were handsome, you're a very handsome guy, Sherman. So look, I appreciate your kind comments, and you know, you and I go back a long way, and you have been critical, and you've said it right from the beginning, but I just want to share something with you, Sherman, and this is sort of a, I'm going to talk for a couple of minutes here, I want to share a story with you, and this is sort of a symbol from what I'm about to say, for anyone down the road in any government who wants to enter a political career. So you know my background and my business career, but what you may not know is that in addition to being CEO of my companies... But what you may not know is that, in addition to being CEO of my companies, we were regional companies, at the same time I was the CEO of my companies with CFOs reporting to me up and down the East Coast, I was also the regional president for a national agency. I put together a national LLC to help protect our corporation from a defensive and offensive position to secure major Fortune 500 consumer product companies that we had as clients, but also attract new clients. So in those years, I was all over the United States, in addition to not only living in North Haven, but also, you know, presiding over my companies in Massachusetts. I had offices in New Jersey and Baltimore and Pennsylvania and down in the Virginias. I also headed up the mergers and acquisitions team for the companies. But what you don't know is, at that time also, I was part of a national consulting firm. And as part of being a national consultant, I would work with private equity companies and counsel them on how to do mergers and acquisitions on multiples of EBITDA and introduce the concept of add-backs to help get to the point where the merger and acquisition could take place. On top of that, I was a featured speaker for seven different companies all over the United States. I was actually recruited by the National Speakers Bureau, which I often wondered if I had taken that direction, what would have happened? So on top of that, I had the relationships with some of the largest companies in the United States and the world, companies like Nestle, Unilever, Gatorade. When Michael Jordan was spokesperson for Gatorade, we'd go out to Chicago and have meetings with him and the top executives from Gatorade. I can go on and on and on. So now I come and cross over to this career. I could tell you that despite everything I just said to you, what I did in the past, this is the most difficult job I've ever had, the most complicated job I've ever had. It is 24/7, nonstop, 100 phone calls a day, 100 emails a day. We're involved, as Val knows, and sometimes she'll say, "I don't know how you do it, Mike, with all the energy that you demonstrate because of the complexity of this position." So I could do it the other way and not do anything and just sit back and relax. But you know, and she knows because she sees me in action every day. So the point of this story is it's twofold. I'm not perfect in this job, Sherman, because of the complexity and the difficulty of it. So I'm far from perfect. And the other lesson is, for anyone down the road, young people wanting to enter this career, be prepared for the most relentlessly difficult physically, emotionally, and psychologically job you've ever had because you're in for something that you don't know what this position entails. All that experience, I can say, Bill, Sally, this is the most difficult job I've ever had.
I can understand that because you're... In some respects, you're not the boss. I was in a position where if I said, "I want this put over here from now on," that's what they did. They put it over there from now on, which is what you did. I was reluctant to say this, but it was brought up by Nancy. We had a town meeting with seven people voting, people that never show up for that kind of meeting. And it's... I hate to say it, but, you know, it's like you ruled the roost.
I wasn't even here for the vote.
You weren't here. I know you weren't here.
I was another being added to...
Gary Johns, who doesn't come to a meeting unless he really has to, he was here, and a few other people.
So when you say, "I ruled..." What do you mean, "I ruled the roost"? What do you mean?
It looked like you had some influence on how people should...
Sherman, I gotta be honest with you. I gotta be perfectly honest with you on this, okay? And I don't really care about that issue. But the auditors told us that this is what we recommend. So by procedure, we have to go to a town meeting. Believe me, and I've already talked at about this, this doesn't mean we're not going to micromanage the bid process. We bring it to the public.